Okay, we're all set.
Right. Started. We had some technical difficulties, but it is now 4:07 PM. Today's Friday, June 12th, 2020, and we are doing a special meeting here to be a teleconference to interview a possible candidate or a candidate for the Township Manager position. So Randy, if you do roll call, please.
Uh, trustee Marks. Trustee Iverson.
Here.
Trustee Wigan.
Yeah.
Trustee LaRue.
Here.
Treasure Johnson.
Yeah.
Clerk O'Tarri is here and Supervisor Durant.
Yeah.
Staff present is Manager Gerard. It looks like we got Superintendent Public Works John Kangas here. Our accountant Lois Stonehouse is here. Brenda Helgren, our Accounts Clerk is here, and that's it for our staff.
Sounds good. All right. Any public comment? Anybody want to share something before we get going? Okay.
I have none on the email either, Ellen.
Okay. And then no board member comments, so we just need approval of the agenda?
Move to approve the agenda as presented.
Lots of support. Go ahead, Randy.
Trustee Marks.
Yes.
Clerk O'Tarri is yes. Um, trustee Wigan.
Yes.
Trustee Iverson.
Yes.
Trustee LaRue.
Here, yes.
Treasure Johnson.
Yes.
Supervisor Durant.
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
Okay. I'm not aware of any conflicts of interest, so we can get into interview for candidate of position for Township Manager, Market Township Manager. Welcome, John Kangas. You can take your mute off. We've kind of done this before with you, not necessarily in this same setting. But if you'd like to do some opening comments or something before we get into questions, that would be great. If not, we can go on. It's up to you.
Well, I guess the only thing I have to say is thanks for giving me another opportunity. I know my first round, I definitely wasn't as prepared as a prepared candidate should be. That being said, I understand the situation you're in and I know that there were far better candidates than myself as far as experience goes, so if at this point I present myself as the best candidate going forward, then let's see where it can take us.
Okay, sounds good. Mr. Walsh, would you be kind enough to give us kind of a synopsis of what's been going on this week for the board? Get them up to date.
Certainly. Thank you Supervisor. Um, we posted the job actually the day after your meeting, we were able to get the job posted. So it's actually been posted for a week now. And we received so far 13 applications. Many of those were repeat applicants from the process that I started. There were two candidates that were from your first process. One of those candidates is before you today. I carefully reviewed all the applicants. There was an email contact as well late last night from a candidate who was involved in your first process. However, ethically, I can't present a candidate to you unless they apply in this process. I can't go dig applications out that were from another process that I haven't been involved in and present them. So as fact, as a matter of fact, the gentleman in front of you today was, was, had to provide an application in this process to be considered, and he clearly understood that. So out of all the applicants that I've seen, and I know the opening comments from Mr. Kangas said that he may not be the most experienced. Well, that might be the case, but what I have found in the last week is a gentleman who might absolutely be the right fit. And if you find the right fit, been a manager before, and so that's why, in fairness to all the other candidates too, the way I set this up and you asked me to set it up how I normally would set up any process, I believe we take a look today and see if Mr. Kangas is the right individual. And if not, then we'll go back to the other candidates depending on what you decide to do today. But in fairness to everyone, this is the right process to go along. And I've enjoyed all of my conversations this week that I've had with Mr. Kangas. He's been a manager before. He knows your committee. And then it's up to you to figure out if he's the right fit or not. So that's kind of a summary of what's happened in the past week. The ad did say, respond immediately. Open until filled without delay, apply. So people have eight days to do that. So that's a synopsis unless there's any questions.
Sounds good. We can proceed. Thanks Frank. Appreciate the update. All right. Everybody should have received a list of questions that we put together. Frank and I added some, took some out and kind of assigned one to everybody, so they've all got at least two. Except Dave may come up with one. So if you want to start, Dave, with the first one.
All right, before I pose the question, John, how, how long have you actually been here Superintendent? Been a year yet?
No, about nine months.
Nine months?
Yep.
Okay, well, that has to do with my first question is this, you've been here for a while. You've, you've seen how the operation goes and while I don't expect you're going to come out here and, and say, this needs to be changed immediately. You must have some ideas on some things that you'd like to explore, some operate options you'd like to to explore a little bit as far as changes go. And knowing you're still going to be in, in overseeing the, the Public Works Department, and you've made some changes there. Maybe you would like to address where you see that going in the future from your perspective as manager and, and then if there's anything in the rest of the the Township offices that you'd like to change, what kind of ideas you might have.
Interesting question, considering everyone I deal with currently is, is a coworker or media supervisor. But very appropriate question. So regarding Public Works, I think overall, I'm pretty satisfied with, with the performance we're getting out of that department. Every project I have personally witnessed has been done professionally, enthusiastically, and as efficiently as possible to the point of skipping lunches to get the job done sooner. So I think that's something to be for the, for the crew to be commended on. They are a hardworking group of guys. I think the biggest thing there is staying focused on the tasks at hand to keep everything on schedule. And we're working on, I guess I've started working on, on a way to help improve upon that as far as scheduling all of the routine tasks. I'm a big Outlook scheduler myself, and I'd like to see maybe Lenny get, get used to doing that as well. As far as internally, I, I think overall, we have a very professional staff. One of the biggest reasons why I chose to come to Market Township because I told this to Lynn on the phone the other day, I really think that Marquette Township by far sets the bar in the county for professionalism as far as staff goes. So I don't know that I could give you any specific changes I'd like to do along that front. The biggest thing is seeing as we move forward, where our revenues continue to go, knowing that COVID has had a significant impact on revenue sharing specifically. Getting final evaluation of our water and sewer revenues, knowing that we have possibly a 25% reduction in our commercial use for water and sewer. Not quite as bad in, in the residential side. That might only be about 3% reduction. And even an increase in some of the districts, but I guess I don't have anything specifically for you on that subject currently. I, I, I think every department should be evaluated annually though.
Okay, thanks.
Hey. Pete, you have the next question.
Lynn, I'd like to make one comment before. And you're gonna have to read my question because I did not get the list of them.
Oh.
So I've gone most of the day, so I didn't get that. But the comment I want to make as far as John working, you got cheated for me before on this, the first roundabout round. It's because I really wanted John to be the Superintendent of our Public Works because I've watched John, I've watched the meetings initially, and I've talked to different people. People told me that he's well known. He does a great job. And a good example of that job is a behind a grant, on the corner of Granite and Huron Street down in the corner. We've had problems with that drainage coming downhill through the backyards and they've been plugging up and backing into a McFarnes basement and that. They went down, he had a good, went down there and they cleaned up the whole thing. Got the, all the stumps and that out of there. Got the sides of the trench good. But you should see that. And I mentioned to John what a good job he did. And he, he said it met his expectation, what he wanted to see there. And I think it's going to cure a lot of our problems there. So if that's indication of how he thinks and works, I'm all for him. I think he'd be our, you know, a good man for the position. I just feel bad that I didn't speak more about him on, on the first time because I thought Dennis was going to come. And then John would work with Dennis, and then Dennis would retire and John would take over. So now what was my question?
Thanks Pete.
You sure you want to work with this group, John? I don't know. It says, please share with us your proudest professional accomplishment.
Proudest accomplishment? I would probably have to say the completion of the Partridge Creek Project in Ishmaine. That was a pretty amazing project. It involved initially a pretty significant commitment from the city. They had to come up with $800,000 of their own money, which they really didn't have, so they had to bond for it in order to get the first round of grant money from the Great Lakes Restoration Initiative in order to construct the first phase of that project. And if, if you're not aware of the project, Partridge Creek is a creek that ran through the city storm sewer. It was rerouted during the mining days. And over time, it was diverted into the New York Mine Pit. And from there, it worked its way through the Cliff Shaft mine workings and it picked up mercury. That mercury in turn dumped into Carp Creek and then into Deer Lake, which became a beneficial use impairment. And it, it was listed as a contaminated site on the state's actually national level. Over time, they were able to eliminate all beneficial use impairments on Deer Lake except for the mercury issue. So the EPA made a priority to try to complete the rerouting of the stream out of New York Mine Pit back into the city storm system. And we're talking 100 plus year old brick and mortar pipe tall enough for, I think, everyone on this call to walk through without hunching over. Pretty amazing workmanship back in those days by, I'm assuming the Italians that helped build the city. It was still structurally okay, but wasn't going to be long term. So we identified very early on, if we're putting this creek back in there, we have to rebuild the storm sewer. Interestingly, that storm sewer was a combined sewer prior to 1984, I believe. So that's why it was sized as large as it was. In the end, we maintained the same size with reinforced concrete pipe to ensure that we could handle the largest storms anticipated that would flow through as part of Partridge Creek. Rounds two and three were fully funded by grant money. We replaced everything from face of building to face of building, including streetlights, all with grant money. That's not something that you would typically expect from Great Lakes Restoration Initiative money, but because of the size of excavation, we had to create in order to replace the six, six plus foot diameter pipe. The excavation, the trench wood, the side slopes did completely wipe out the sidewalks, which were about the only thing left supporting those streetlights. So complete face of building to face of building reconstruction, water sewer. Sewer if needed because it had been separated in the early eighties. It was the newest infrastructure we had. Decorative streetlights. New curb and gutter sidewalks, streets. It was probably the most expensive project the city will encounter in a while for a project limits of that length.
Awesome. Okay. We lost Pete, but that's okay. Dan, you okay.
Didn't miss nothing.
Dan, you got the next question?
Yes, good afternoon, John.
Good afternoon.
In your experience as a manager, how do you, how do you motivate your team? What's your best way to motivate all your personnel that are working for you?
Roll up my sleeves and sit down and help them. Sit, sit down next to them and help them get the job done. I mean, that's the biggest thing. If, if you prove that you're an active participating member of the team, they will work with you and for you.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. John, you've got the next question.
It's John.
Yours, yep.
Okay, I didn't get the questions either, but that's all right.
Sorry.
John, the full board, the full township board has had an opportunity to evaluate you. We've watched you in the time that you've been with us. Knowing that your reports are great on detail. They are easy to understand and your, your attention to detail is just great. It's outstanding. I thought a while back along with Randy O'Tarri, that you were a good choice. After watching you as our, as you manage the department that you've had, it's also given me more assurance than ever that you would make a good manager. I also want to point out to my board members as they look at you that think about it for a while. The manager that is finally selected will be the person who will be picking other people because the manager does that in a number of cases of different areas of the township staff. I can't think of anyone who we are considering who would be better equipped as manager picking another person to be our Department of Public Works person other than you as your education, your engineering background, and I'm sure with your contacts at Michigan Tech, you would know who would be a good replacement for our Public Works management. And so I say that because I'm not sure of anybody else that's been considered would be as qualified as you would be as a manager picking the new Department of Public Works person. I think you'd make a great manager, and I'm 100% still 100% wishing that you could be our choice.
Thank you.
That does dovetail a little on the question. It asked what process you'd fill to, to hire your replacement, believe it or not.
That, that's an interesting one that I have spent a little bit of time thinking about. And I guess I would, I would ask the, the board to remember that if I became the manager, my engineering experience does not go away. So that, that stays with the township no matter what. And at that point, it gives the township quite a bit of flexibility in deciding who you choose, what qualifications they have to be my replacement if, if this transpires. So I will always have an interest in the infrastructure and engineering aspects of the municipality. There's, there's no way of eliminating that from my blood. It is probably my greatest passion, and it's based on all of my training and education and experiences to date. So it will probably be pretty hard to get me away from a lot of that. At least on a weekly, monthly basis. I, I would understand that need to not be as, as into the weeds on a daily or hourly basis as I am now. So there's opportunities to look at internal candidates as well as external, I believe. The Public Works Department is probably actually one of the most skilled departments I've seen in a long time. There's two members that don't have certificate, three that don't have certifications currently. One is eligible to take the test, and I'm hoping is going to be approved to take it this fall. The second will hopefully be able to take the test next spring or maybe in the fall of next year. And of course, that's all dependent on whether or not you can take tests in person. I'm actually scheduled to take the limited treatment exam in July. And I was informed the other day that I'll have to sit with my mask on in a room all day if I intend to continue with that. So that'll be interesting, but there are good candidates in-house that I think are far more qualified than your average blue collar Public Works employee. It is a skilled department, so I would not discount that as an option. It just means that you have to consider whether or not you want somebody as a superintendent that also has the engineering background. And I only led the way I did because I want you to understand that I will still have great interest in that aspect of, of the operation. So.
Okay, sounds good. My question is, what steps would you recommend to enhance our communication with residents?
That's a good one. I know that was brought up in my first interview, and I actually am aware of more communicating now than I was then. I, I didn't know that we had the mass email list. In fact, we you'll recall that we had the issue with story going to the Mining Journal from our Facebook post before the board even knew that it was out there. And shame on me, I didn't even copy the board on it, but it went out on the email blast. And since then, we've added the entire board to the email blast. I think that's very important because there's so many people that only have email. I know the younger generations don't have much use for email anymore, so we do have the social media. I think having public meetings are very important. We can see from the board meetings, not too many people are interested in attending the normal business types of meetings, but if you have specific subjects and advertise to the public that their involvement is necessary, you will get more people than show up to a normal board meeting. Still though, not as much participation as you get from reading email blasts or Facebook posts. So it's always a challenge because not everyone uses every option that's out there. And adding more as, as they become more popular is always a good idea. Putting the most important things on the back of the utility bill, sending out additional like we do with our annual consumer confidence report, which will be coming up soon. Or violation notice we had from last fall. Of course, every time you do a mass mailing, you have costs involved, right? So budgetary impacts, I, I think the more you can use the digital options available, the the least amount of cost you will have. It's just getting as many people in the township to participate in those options as possible.
Okay. Ernie, you've got the next question?
Yes. Question I have, John, is what did you find, what would you find would be the biggest, your biggest challenge you would be facing as a Township Manager in your first year?
I think the biggest thing is all of the potential revenue cuts, first in the revenue sharing from the state due to COVID impacts, but also any additional dark store decisions coming down. So if we have back payments that need to be made, that will be a significant impact on our fund balance. So finding a way to weather that storm, which I think is probably one of the bigger priorities we have currently is getting through this, this little bump in the road. And maybe bump's not the right way because in a recession, the, the curve goes down, right? As opposed to up. But if we can survive or weather this storm, I, I have a feeling Marquette Township is going to come on the other side pretty well because we still have a lot of interest in development. We have a lot of opportunity for growth. The biggest challenge will be finding the interested parties that want to spend their money in the township. We just had a conversation with a developer the other day, Randy, myself, Jason, that wants to get water to a residential neighborhood. The problem is there's a mild gap between his property and the end of the existing system. That leads to a much greater picture of does it make sense? And I'm going to give Randy some credit on this because he's the one that raised the issue of running a loop to the north. A lot of the emphasis to date has been Phase Two, which is on the south or west southwest corner of the township. There's plenty of opportunity for growth. It's a matter of finding ways to get those developers to come to the township. Housing is going to be a big deal. It's been a challenge in the county for a long time. The realtors are loving it. So adding new housing is probably going to be something on the horizon.
Go ahead, Ernie.
To follow up, what would you, what did you face as a Township Manager? I would say, what's the biggest challenge that you faced as a Township Manager in your previous position?
I, I was expecting that one, and I've thought about it long and hard. I think the biggest challenge was being the first full-time manager. When an organization makes that change, they have to be committed to it. And if not everyone's on board, it will be rocky. So it's a challenge, but at the same time, an opportunity. In the end, I didn't stay there because the opportunity was far greater where I currently am.
Thank, thank you.
Thanks, Ernie. Randy?
All right, John. Good afternoon. And here's the question I have is, tell us what steps you would take to solve citizen complaints?
Number one, listen until they're done talking. Just today, I had to apologize to a woman on the phone because I thought she was done talking. I started. And I was about to miss the most important part of the conversation. If you don't listen first, you're not going to even have a chance at finding a solution to whatever the concern is. So if you can first listen, analyze what the concern is. Usually there's a solution. Sometimes it means field investigation, which I actually like to do because that's the easiest way to see what the problem really is. Put your eyes on it. Probably one of my greatest strengths also, it, along those lines is, is problem solving. It's, it's one of the things I enjoy the most about the job I have, the jobs I have had. We are service-based employees and, and I really enjoy what I do. So listening, analyzing the situation, verifying that it's a situation that we have responsibility for. That's the other issue too, right? I choose to live in a township because the taxes are more affordable. But I also understand that the level of services aren't as great as you might have in the city. Some folks who have lived in a city prior and move into the township don't necessarily understand the differences. So they come with a higher expectation than what the township is actually able to provide. Quite simply, from a public works perspective, we have water, sewer, and solid waste in our budgets. Those are very minimal compared to a full-service city. A full-service city, you're going to have major and local streets, which are funded by Act $51. You're going to have possibly cemeteries, which I know Ishmaine, Nagani, and Marquette all have. You have to fund those as well so they have their own budgets. Parks and Rec, they could have their own budgets, or each park could have its own budget. Plenty of, of opportunities from the city perspective, provide, provide services that residents might not realize aren't necessarily available in, in a township. That being said, Marquette Township is almost a full-service township. So So we're doing pretty well for, for the taxpayers, I would say. The issue is, we don't have Act 51 funds, so we have a road millage. We don't have a revenue stream other than the general fund for stormwater improvements. The drainage improvement we did the other day, the only reason we did it, and I made it perfectly clear to the resident, is because it was on property that we owned. So if our property was creating a problem for him, we need to resolve it to minimize our liability. And that's what we did. And I think we had a great outcome on that project. I guess that's about where I'd leave that part of the conversation.
Yeah. Thank you, John. Very good.
Okay, Dave, you do have a question, you said?
Yeah, John, I'm sitting here watching this this afternoon. It occurs to me that if this moves forward, as you hope it will move forward, you're getting ready to jump in both feet into the fire. You've, you're obviously geared towards the public works aspect of it and you've, and you've pretty much hit the ground running with that. But if you could address the things that have cropped up since you've been the manager or the superintendent of public work with regards to the COVID-19, the declining revenue, you've become a little more familiar with the dark store issue. If you could just talk a bit about your comfort level jumping into that or your level of apprehension, whichever one there is.
I would say it's a little bit of both. And I'll, I'll tell you, it's an opportunity for me. What my fear is, with limited responsibilities here in the township compared to what I had as the Public Works Director and City Engineer, it should be water, sewer, and solid waste might not be enough to keep me entertained, so to speak. So I really believe, based on the experiences I've had, I had in Chocolatetownship on top of the public works experiences, all of the above is what I want to have a role in because I think that's where I can best serve the township. I'm interested in all of it. The budget stuff, excuse me, there can be some good years and some bad years, but overall, it's, it's a process that you follow and you get it as close as you can. It becomes a guide for you to move through the next year. I know we've had several budget amendments already, even in my department. And it's just, you give it the best shot you can. As far as the HR aspect of it, I've had that anyway. And I think anyone that is willing to give me a shot to be their immediate supervisor will generally learn to trust me. They don't have to respect me as long as they treat me with respect. And I usually, because that's what I expect, that's what I will provide all of the employees too. I'm not sure off the top of my head, what other aspects of the operation I necessarily feel and need to discuss at this time, other than maybe talking about the strategic planning process a little bit, which I whiffed on last time. And I'm, I hope you understand that that's the way I am. I, I'm honest. I don't try to sugarcoat something that I don't have the answer for. I will find the answers. I didn't go and study up on strategic planning since my last interview, but I did start to remember some of the processes I've been through in my career. And I remembered one of the slogans that one of my corporate employers had in their process. They were going to create big hairy audacious goals. I think it's great to have big hairy audacious goals, but I think it's also important to have achievable goals. And if you're not a business, you can't necessarily generate revenue by working harder all the time. Sometimes the revenue has to come to you through just the natural process of growth or generating interest in your community. So people want to spend their money in it. And of course, if you have a good plan on where you want to go, having that Michigan mission statement and all those things, that big hairy audacious goals can become big and hairy. They don't have to be small goals that are achievable in five years and baby steps. They can be goals that you, you plan for, for five years, and then you take a big step forward. Marquette Township has much more ability to do that than most other places in the county, I believe.
Well, I could say that if you're looking for a increased level of entertainment, this is definitely entertaining, so.
I would much rather deal with the entertainment at the local level than state or federal.
Okay. Pete, you don't have a question, right? Do you want me to read it?
Yes, please.
What do you believe is your most important task as the appointed leader of Marquette Charter Township?
To serve the board, which is serving the public. That's the primary role. It's basically a top-down to a top-down type of scenario. So seven to one, one back to the total number of employees you have, you have to be the bottleneck and the hourglass. And everything goes through the manager, making sure that all of the expectations are properly met. And if they're not, how do you move to correct them?
Great analogy.
Man? Follow up on it. The project that John mentioned down there off of Granite Street there, he mentioned that when he was working down there, he went down there and checked and he made a comment that I sort of laughed at because I understand it very well, is that he said, "They even let me use a shovel." Because sometimes when you get into a union project or something like that, you're not supposed to touch anything. You're the boss and stuff like that. But you know, that just shows the cooperation that he's gained between the workers and himself. So it's a credit to his ability to work with people.
Good. Thanks for that.
Mind, I'd like to add something real brief on top of that. You don't gain that trust without first asking if it's okay. If it was a strong union shop, I think it would take, take two to three years to gain that trust. I don't think I ever had a tool in my vehicle when I worked at Ishbemngani for the first three years. After a while, they let me have a shovel. And that's only because they knew what I intended to do with it. And it was to help clean up drainage areas where, but we have them all over Troll Bridge, where the sand builds up and then the water can't get off the road. I would, as I'm driving around, I grab that shovel, clean out the spillway, get the water off the road. That problem would be gone for another month. By the end, they would let me shovel the sidewalk into my office. As long as it's doing something that they wouldn't want to do or don't really have great interest in doing. And in that particular situation, I was getting there an hour ahead of them if they don't work overnight following the streets. So I had to earn the trust before I could actually dare to do it.
Okay, sounds good. Dan?
My second question, John, is what three words best, best describe your personality?
Calm. I don't get worked up over too much. Energetic. For those of you that don't know, on the weekends, I like to ride my bike for 10, 15 hours at a time. I've done that twice this year and tomorrow I have the third one planned with my just-turned-14-year-old son. He's done three century rides, or this will be his third century ride in four Saturdays, having just turned 14. It's what we like to do for adventure, to maintain our physical and mental health. The sense of accomplishment is, is pretty incredible, especially for my son. He, if we are successful tomorrow, he will have done something in basically one month that I've done. That took me my whole life to do. And it's because he knew that if he put in the effort, he was capable of doing it. And it's something that he's learned to enjoy. And I get to spend that time with my son. It's pretty incredible. Now, the flip side of that is, when my son and I are riding our bike around in the woods between here and Launce, my wife and other two kids are looking for something to do. So we fill up the car with snacks and drinks and they chase us around and resupply us every once in a while. So we are kind of lazy about how we do it, but that's mostly out of convenience because we're already, our goal is to do the distance, not necessarily do it completely unsupported. We're, we're going to try that someday because I now have water filters, so. Anyway, that was two. I need a third, don't I?
Can you think of one more?
I'm sure there are. Maybe, maybe the third should be humble. I don't like to get too full of myself. I think egos get in the way of a lot of productive time. And interviews are about the only time where I come close to talking about what I think are my good qualities. I prefer to have other people judge me for who I am and try to be the person that I would want to be when I look in the mirror, so.
Very good. Thank, thank you.
John, well, your next question is asking about the strategic planning process. If you wanted to add something to that, John kind of answered the strategic question, or if you've got a separate question.
No, I think you should answer that already.
Okay. Ernie, you have the next one?
Okay, this is a question I have for you, John. Really, without telling us what has happened, what have you learned about a failure in your past?
Trust my first instinct. It applies in many different aspects where I chose not to. It will catch up with you in the end, whether it's dealing with a personnel issue or a project issue where you think, oh, that's good enough. Good enough is never enough. You have to address it head-on. And as, as soon as you recognize the problem, too many times kicking the can down the road will bite you in the end.
Thank you.
My question is, why should we hire you?
I'm going to give you the same answer I did last time. Hire me if you think I'm the best person for the job. I know I've had this conversation with you, Lynn. I do really truly enjoy the job I have. I see this as an opportunity to be of greater assistance to the township than I currently am. If there's a better candidate, I'd love to work with that person because I'm sure we can only learn from each other. And that's about as honest an answer as I can give you.
Sounds good. Randy, you've got the last one?
Okay, and it's for you, John. What questions do you have for us?
I don't know that I have too many. I, I follow the process closely because I've been interested, not, obviously interested in the position myself, but also interested in, in who, who Randy's successor would be. I did come to the township with, with the hope of ultimately having the position. If it doesn't happen this time, whether it's next time or the next, I think I have a lot of tread left on my tires, so I will be around for a while. And I don't plan on leaving regardless of what the outcome is here. I've, I've found what I hope to be my final resting spot as a career goal, so. I think that's, that's the most important thing I want you to hear. If you find a better candidate, you should, you should give that candidate an opportunity. But if you think, if you think as I do, that I can do the job well for you, then I'm eager to take the opportunity.
Thank you, John. I think that, that was a good answer.
Did have one phone call from a woman west of here in the township and was excited and made sure that I told the board that we need to hire this gentleman as the township manager. And she does not have a lot of computer ability. And she wanted to make sure that, that she told me she's followed it in the newspaper. So whatever the Mining Journal writes, that's what she knows. And she wants to throw her support behind John for this position. I told her I would. So any other follow-up? Anything that anybody else wanted to question or check on?
I did have one last thing, if you don't mind, Lynn. I just wanted to thank Frank for, for his encouragement. He's been obviously very professional through the whole process. And he was very diligent about keeping me on task and deciding what I chose to do in this situation. Obviously, considering everything that's happened to date will, will cause a person to raise or consider all of the pros and cons moving forward with the opportunity. And I have no doubt that Frank is the right person to be doing the search for the township. So I guess I'd just like to throw that out there.
Thanks. That was good. Okay. Well, I did make this a special meeting in case we wanted to make a motion. If anybody has a pleasure, or we can bring this across to the Tuesday meeting, board meeting, Pete?
Well, I'm thanking John for reconsidering and putting his name back in the hat because I think he would, he will be a great, do a great job for us. And I would be like to make a motion that we hire John Genghis for our new manager. The board.
Okay.
Actually, the, the motion will be to offer John a conditional offer of employment.
And if he joins the Chalky Lions.
Okay, and who supported? Was that Ernie or Dan?
Trustee Markstead.
Okay, and you're okay with that, that change in the motion?
I am.
Okay. Any follow-up questions, comments? Randy?
Just to remind the board, when we do this, we'll offer John a conditional offer of employment. Frank and Lynn will negotiate the contract. The board will end up seeing the final result.
Which could be Tuesday. Dave?
Yes?
Just, just an observation.
What's that?
I fully support the, the offering of the position to John. I just think it's, it's interesting, the big circle we made to get back to the same point.
But like I said before, I was being selfish because I thought Dennis would come up here and we couldn't ask for a better superintendent. And now we're going to have a manager with that experience, a superintendent of public works. And so it would be really gaining a lot.
I told John the same thing. I felt that maybe we had to go through all of this so he could get his feet wet and see for sure if this was something he wanted to do. He felt a little, I don't know if insecure is the right word. I didn't want to put words in his mouth with the first interview. Circumstances were different, but I think this is helping him to assure him and his family that this is what he wants to do. And I, I support that motion too.
As long as he feels comfortable and he wants to do it, and sounds like he really wants to do it, and he's very capable of it. So I'm very comfortable with it.
I was being selfish too. I didn't want to have to lose him out of the public works, especially at that time. It's obvious that he came across and gave us exactly what we were looking for when we needed it. And he's made the transition very easy for us with Kirk retiring. And I, I really didn't want to lose him there either. And he's made a big impact in the department in the short time he's been here. Dan?
Plus his knowledge and understanding of Charter Township government. You know, he's, he's been around Charter Townships now for a couple of years. And, and I like the idea that he does have the understanding. And he's been working with Charter Townships for a little while now.
Okay, anything else? Ernie?
I think that the first time around, he was really a new employee to the township. And all we had was a background from his past experiences and that. And I think since that point in time, he's really showed us what he capable of doing and what he has done in that. And that has really changed my mind 100%. Just looking at what he's done and the effort he's put in there and what's been accomplished in the department. I think it's fantastic in that. And I kind of kicked myself for his first time around because And I kind of kicked myself for his first time around because I know Randy made the motion and he didn't really get a lot of support. He knew something the rest of us didn't know. And now I think we're, we've come around and really understood what the individual that we have in that. That's all.
Yes, John?
I, I guess I, I really appreciate all the kind words. I, I need to tell you one more thing that Frank told me in the first conversation I had with him. Everything happens for a reason. And you will all recall that when I sent my letter thanking you for the first interview, the first thing I asked was for the opportunity if it came up again. And the only thing that, that made me hesitate is I've had more time to get comfortable in the position I'm in too. And I really do like the position I have. But that being said, you, everything else I, I told you today is, is also true. And I look forward to greater opportunity, greater challenges.
What was that, Pete?
You don't lose that responsibility. You're still going to be responsible for that department, one way or another.
Anything else? Okay, Mr. Clerk, would you do a roll call?
Yeah, I'll read the motion. The motion is to offer, conditional offer of employment to John Kangas for the township manager's position. Roll call vote will be trustee Larue.
Yes.
Trustee Marks?
Yes.
Trustee Wiegand?
Yes.
Trustee Iverson?
Yes.
Treasurer Johnson?
Yes.
Clerk Rattari is yes. And Supervisor Durant?
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Mr. Ray.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, John.
Okay, any board member comment? You just, go ahead, Randy.
The only thing is I will be sending out, we will have one more, at least one more Zoom meeting for the board meeting next Tuesday. I talked to the manager about this and the orders are still in place for social distancing and such. So we'll shoot for one more Zoom meeting. Hopefully by July 7th, which is our first July meeting, things will be different. But we'll do one more Zoom meeting and then hopefully things, we can get back together, so. And I'll send that information out tonight. I didn't want to confuse anyone by sending it out today and then getting on the wrong meeting. So I'll do that tonight.
Good, thank you. Manager Gerard, do you want to throw anything in?
No, just to dovetail in Clerk Rattari's statement, Executive Order 115 does include Executive Order 114 that puts us still in the remote work environment for our staff. So we, we will not be calling them back unless there is a new executive order that changes that. I did not see one today. And with regard to the, to the meeting, we, we're a little, our space is more cramped, you know, the social distancing does impact that. So I'm guessing that by your next meeting, that's three weeks from now, we remember we're, we have an extra week in here. So within that next three weeks, I'm pretty sure there'll be another executive order.
Okay, Pete?
I'd like to thank Lynn, yourself, Randy Rattari and Frank for going through the process ahead of time and doing, you know, taking a little bit of a brunt of this. So I want to thank you very much. The second thing I'd like to do is wish Randy Rattari a happy birthday today.
Birthday.
Thank you.
Agenda item.
Get the big present.
Anything else? Okay. Well, Randy needs to read the motions.
Yep, the motions of today's special meeting were the approval of the agenda, and that was seven zero. And the second motion was to offer a conditional offer of employment to John Kangas for the position of township manager. And that motion carried seven zero.
Okay, now you can, Dan.
Now I can make the motion to adjourn. Have a good weekend, everybody.
I'll support that.
Give us a roll call.
Trustee Iverson?
Yes.
Clerk Rattari is yes. Trustee Larue?
Yes.
Trustee Marks?
Yes.
Trustee Wiegand?
Yes.
Treasurer Johnson?
Yes.
And Supervisor Durant?
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
5:03 PM.
5:03 PM. I'll just stop the recording right now and we'll be done.